Tonight is, tonight is March twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen. And again, this is the zoning and land regulation committee. Is there anyone wishing to address the committee on any item not listed on the agenda?
Yes.
Please step forward and identify yourselves.
Yes, I'm Holly Slater, pastor of St. Paul's Liberty Lutheran Church, town of Deerfield. So I just have one brief thing to read you, and we have some handouts for you, if you're okay with that.
Yes.
As members of St. Paul's Liberty Lutheran Church in Deerfield, we would like to share our strong concerns about two matters relating to the township of Deerfield's approval process related to the Oakheart Quarry CUP number zero-two-four-four-nine that is set to come before you on April ninth at your next meeting. Our first concern relates to potential violations of the process. There were actions that occurred prior to the public hearing that may have resulted in an unfair and biased decision before the public hearing. It is our understanding that a public hearing of this nature is to be treated as a quasi-judicial hearing where all parties are entitled to a fair, unbiased opportunity to share evidence to the board members, and that all evidence submitted at the hearing must be considered carefully. Emails sent from the town board members indicate that the CUP was distributed last September, and board members were already in agreement to approve it four months prior to the public hearing being held. The public hearing is a meeting in which we should have expected to have our evidence considered, rather than have the town board members announce that they have been working on helping to write the conditions in the CUP, which they subsequently approved on March eleventh. What then is the purpose of a public hearing if the decision by the governing body has already taken place?
Holly, excuse me, are you talking, when you say "board members," do you mean the town board members?
Yes, town board members, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I should have specified, yes.
Yeah, I was kinda confused.
You haven't made any decisions.
Right, right.
Yes. Our second concern is specific to the comments that were made by the Deerfield Township Board members at the March eleventh board meeting about the county ZLR board members and ZLR office staff, specific to the blasting conditions in the CUP. Comments specific to your lack of knowledge about blasting, and your lack of desire to know about blasting. Comments that indicate that the only way you, the county, will accept the CUP is if it will allow the quarry owner to exceed the blasting ordinances one out of every ten times, repeatable up to three times in a twelve-month period. No one from the county was present at the March eleventh meeting to verify if these comments were true, so the audience was left to assume this is the case. We would strongly suggest that you take the time to visit the WDEE public television station website, and watch the town of Deerfield public hearing dated January fourteenth, and a township board meeting dated March eleventh. That is on the subsequent pages here, that web address. Both meetings are lengthy, so if you are short on time, we have provided transcript from the portion of the March eleventh meeting, starting at approximately two hours fifty-one minutes until three hours and one minute, in the tape in which multiple statements are made about what the county board members would allegedly be willing to approve in the CUP, related to allowing one out of ten blasts to exceed the township ordinances, along with statements made by various ZLR staff. Does the county stand behind these statements made at that meeting, knowing that these comments gave the board confidence in approving the permit with few additional conditions? And then the township approved another ten-year CUP for a quarry owner that did not adhere to their first CUP, which just expired. This process and the decisions that are being made have a significant long-term impact on our church and the surrounding cemetery. We would urge you to review the documents we shared with you during the public hearing in February, and also take some time to view the televised town board meetings related to this matter. We deserve to have our voices heard in this process, as we work tirelessly to protect our hundred-and-sixty-eight-year-old church sitting a few hundred years away from this quarry. We need your help. Thank you.
Okay, Holly, just a second.
Yes.
Thanks for your comments. Do either of the board members here have any questions for Holly?
Not right now.
Okay, all right. Thank you for your input.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Yep, well, this will be, this will be scanned into the record, right? Or do we need to make a motion to...
If you would like to make a motion to scan it into the record.
Okay, entertain a motion to scan this information into the record.
Second.
You've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so this will be scanned into the record.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, yeah. Next, we have our public hearing. And first up is petition number one-one-three...
Would you like to go through the opening stuff?
Oh, yeah, I suppose I better introduce everybody. First up, I'd like to introduce the committee members and staff. Of course, we've got Steve, Supervisor Steve Peters, Supervisor Jason Canola, and I'm Jerry Ballinger, Chairman. The county staff members, this is the Planning and Development Director, Todd DiAlante. Wandering over to the right here is the Zoning Administrator Roger Lane, and we've got the Assistant Zoning Administrator Dan Haberson. Next item is the public hearing portion, as I said before. And first, I'd like to go over the committee rules. The committee will be conducting a public hearing on zoning petitions and conditional use applications. Any person wishing to speak, in favor or in opposition, must fill out a white registration form and submit the sheet to staff. Now, I know Roger already checked with you all, but have you all filled one of these out if you wish to speak? Great. When a petition is called, the petitioner will be asked to come to the front of the room to address the committee. We ask that the petitioner state their name, their address, the petition request, and reasons for the request. The petitioner will be given up to five minutes to address the committee. The order of registrants is as follows. After the petitioner or agent, any other persons wishing to speak in favor, then persons wishing to speak in opposition. All speakers be given five minutes to speak. If there is opposition, the petitioner or agent will be given an opportunity at the end of the public hearing to provide a rebuttal to the opposition. The petitioner will be given an additional three minutes. All speakers will address the committee, and not individuals in the audience. There will be no running debate. Any persons that are disruptive will be asked to leave or removed. Now, these are the rules regarding action on a petition. The committee will not take action on a petition until the applicable town has filed a report with the zoning division. The deadline for the towns to submit an action report to the county is the Thursday prior to this meeting date. Public testimony will be taken at this meeting. However, if town action has not been received, a decision will be made at a subsequent meeting. If there is a public opposition on a petition, the petition will be postponed until the next meeting of the year. This will give the petitioner, opposition, and the staff an opportunity to work out matters between the parties. If the town's action has been submitted, and there is no opposition to a petition, the committee may act on the petition and refer the petition to the county board. If the committee passes a zoning petition unanimously, your presence at the county board will not be necessary. However, if the zoning petition is controversial, it is advised you attend the county board. If the committee takes action on a conditional use permit, it's the final action of the county. The zoning petitions which are recommended for approval, we place on the April eleventh county board agenda for action. The next ZLR committee meeting is Tuesday, April ninth. So this is quite lengthy. Has anybody got any questions on the rules for the process? Okay, we'll get into it then. First on, oh, first, I forgot to mention that Supervisor Heidi Wegleitner is excused for tonight. She's the other committee member that's absent. First up, we have petition number one-one-three-eight-nine, Gerald Platt. Good evening.
Right there.
You can, how would you like to do it?
I'm gonna sit.
Okay.
I'm Gerald Platt. That's my big forty-acre ranch, with two homes on it. Sixteen-sixteen Sand Hill Road, Dunn Township. I'd like to separate, make three parcels, three legal parcels out of it, because I have three children. So I'm Dunn farming, and they can have it, they will have it. And just as an interesting idea, my daughter bought the property across the road, so we will be putting these two parcels together after they've been split apart for maybe forty or fifty years. Interesting, put a farm back together. The zoning is from changing from A dash one EX agriculture to RH one rural homes, two of those, and the remaining land from A one EX agriculture to A four agriculture.
Yes?
Anything, is that it?
If you're done.
I'm done.
Okay, anyone else wishing to speak?
Oh, I did have a question.
Sure.
I see the petition is still pending town action as of March fifteenth.
Yes.
Do I have to do something?
You don't have to do anything.
Okay.
As soon as we...
We had a preliminary.
They'll send that to Roger, and then we'll...
As soon as they vote on it, I'll put it on the very next agenda, and the committee will take action on it.
We had a preliminary way last fall.
Okay.
Thank you.
But that, we'll have to come in before we can act on...
Yeah.
On that.
What should I call?
I don't think you need to.
No, it's...
Going normally active.
I'm sure you know the, the committee date that, or the meeting date, that they're going to take action on this.
I don't.
Okay.
I don't know.
Yes, you should call Ben at the town hall.
They'll check with you.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I don't, I don't know if I should, should I ask anybody else if they want to speak in favor or opposition?
Yes.
Okay, anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone wish to speak in opposition? Hearing none, I guess Gerald, you're done for the evening.
Good night.
Good night.
We'll, we'll need a motion to postpone.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion to postpone.
So...
Got a motion to postpone and a second? Anyone, any further comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The petition is postponed. Next, we have Russell Pullman, number one-one-three-nine-zero. Somebody's came in a little bit late. Yep.
I'm Dave Dinkle, Remax Property Shop. I am Pullman's agent on this. In the petition, it's noted that Russell and Janice, lifelong farmers, have been on the farm for all their, all of Russell's life. They're looking to create a four-point-two-acre lot. The lot would be to the LC one district, to allow the, some of their family members to build ultimately a new home and a small trucking business. The lot will front on Highway BB, and so then we don't have any road, spring road issues for the guy's trucking business. It's a small business, I believe he has like three trucks right now. He would be building a large shed to keep everything in there. And as we're all looking at interesting things with land in the rural area, the Pullmans' ancestors settled this farm in eighteen-fifty-eight, and when Russ and Janice's grandchild moves out here, it'll be the ninth generation on the farm. So we have a full belief that they will treat the land and the neighborhood with great respect.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, pretty cool.
Is that your report then?
That's my report.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? We've got, we've had someone registered in this, for information only, Jeff. Okay, and then anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Hearing none, we'll move on to Roger.
Yeah, the town of Deerfield is still looking, still reviewing this petition.
Thank you very much. Then, I guess I'd entertain a motion to postpone. So we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of postponement. Aye, motion carries, we are postponing.
And I'm here for the next one.
You're here for the next one too, Dave, okay. The next one is, that would be, is that the CUP?
Yes.
Okay, CUP twenty-four sixty-two? And go ahead.
Again, Dave Dinkle, Remax Property Shop, for Pullman's. It's an interesting thing how it's being done now, but the LC one handles the business, but the people want to have a home there also, the operators. Russ's son-in-law and daughter want to live on the property, and so the CUP is to allow a single-family residence on that property. There are splits available. It was a large farm originally, still had over two-hundred acres. And so the CUP would allow the house to be built, so they could be there and have their little trucking business and their home on the family farm. That also has not finished the process with Deerfield. It should be noted that we have met with, we expect it'll be going on through, and they realize that they did not post the proper notice for the CUP. Yeah, for the CUP, and so, we're on their next agenda.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Hearing none, we'll move on to Roger's report.
Holly, this petition is still pending at the town of Deerfield.
Okay, I guess at that point, I'd entertain a motion to postpone the CUP.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the CUP is postponed.
Thank you. See you in a couple of weeks.
See you, Dave. Next up, we have rezone number one-one-three-nine-one, Larry Starr.
This petition was withdrawn by the applicant due to the fact that the town had denied this petition.
Okay, so I guess we don't need an action, I believe?
Just noted as withdrawn.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to rezone number one-one-one-three-nine-two, Richard Gramps. Evening, Richard.
I'm Bruce, Bruce Gerbo.
Oh, good.
Richard Gramps.
You fill out the form.
Yeah, son of a... What Richard wants to do, or their plan is, is I'm gonna be purchasing the majority of the vacant land, and he wants to keep a part of it himself, and then we're just realigning some of the lot lines. So, not wanting to build anything, just realignment of the lot lines and properties.
Very good, thank you. Anyone wishing to speak in support of this? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition? Hearing none, I'll move on to Roger's report again.
This petition is still pending at the town of Deerfield.
Because of that, you're aware that we're gonna have to postpone this until we get that? Very good. I entertain a motion to postpone at this time, so we're gonna, got a motion and a second? Any further discussion from the committee? Hearing none, all those in favor of postponing?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, we are postponing. Okay, let's see if we can get something done here now. Other than putting this off till another meeting. Let's try rezone number one-one-three-nine-three, Brooks Vrooman?
Yes, that's me, yeah.
Did I say that right?
You did.
Okay.
Correct. Thank you. Yes, I'm Brooks Vrooman. I live at thirty-four-twenty-eight Ludow Boulevard in Vermont, and what I hope to do is change my zoning from RH three to A two, in order to hopefully get some sanitary fixture in a shop, so that I can run my property management business.
So the whole purpose is to put a...
Like a bathroom.
A bathroom in your shop?
Yeah.
Okay.
Running water.
All right. Is that your total report then?
That's pretty much it, in a nutshell.
All right. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Would anyone like to speak in opposition? Hearing none, I'll move on to Roger's report.
The town of Vermont has approved this petition with no conditions.
Okay. I guess at this point, I entertain a motion for the committee...
For approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We're all set.
Thank you.
Matthew Plendell, rezone number one-one-three-nine-four. Evening.
So, yeah, I'm here because I'm currently, I live at five-nine-nine-two Cuba Valley Road. It's the, I own one acre. I'm looking to purchase the four, roughly four acres directly to the west of me, which is the wooded area inside the red there. And I'm here requesting the rezone, because part of what I worked out with the landlord was that I would take care of the fees and the reset, all the stuff associated with that. Because right now, it's zone A one.
Okay.
So once we hopefully get everything established, I got the survey stuff going, but it'll be rezoned as to one large, roughly five-acre, RR four, I guess it would be now, with the hope of down the road, I would like to put a, like a clearing building or a storage shed on the, the new wood lot there. I went to Vienna, to the zoning commission, and to the town board and every, I did all those meetings, and it passed all that stuff, so I'm just following the steps, and here I am.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Did you fill out a registration form?
I don't think I did get it.
Okay.
I got here right at the last second.
Right. Before you leave tonight, would you...
Sure.
Fill one out and give it to Roger or Diane? Okay. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this petition? Hearing none, I'll move on to the staff report.
The town of Vienna has approved this petition with no conditions.
Okay, so we'll move on to committee action. Anyone like to offer a motion at this time? Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, you're all set, Matt?
Okay, thank you, I'll fill this out.
We'll move on to rezone number one-one-three-nine-five, Felipe Solache. So, did I say that right?
Yeah, you got it right.
The last name too?
Solache, yeah.
Oh, okay, very good. I'm on a roll.
Yeah.
Evening, everyone.
My name is Felipe, last name Solache. I live on ten-seventeen Ridgeway, belongs to town of Madison. My wife and me were planning to do this for kids. I got three, three kids, and they go to college, and here in UW, and M A T C. So, or we're sure, you know, we hope actually convert our house from R three into R four. The design is actually that way originally, when I bought the house, and I wanna put three small apartments on it. The reason why I wanna do this is because I just wanna separate for the kids, you know, for they might get, you know, married, and I don't want to have them travel issues by sharing utilities. So I wanna do a separate utility, which is gas and electrical mainly, and, you know, just put four stack meters for the, for electrical, or mirror sockets, four of those. That will be one for each apartment in the house, you know, with gas also, which requires four gas meters. And that's all I need to do for the kids. So hopefully my wife and me find, you know, a place for retirement later.
Okay.
And I see that town of Madison denied this petition. I don't know why, I mean, we, I don't know what the process will be next.
Roger, can you help me with that?
The current request is for multifamily. There may be some discussions to be had with the town if they would make this into a two-family dwelling unit, rather than a three-family dwelling unit, and I don't know if you wanted to pursue that or not. If you choose to pursue, I would suggest that the committee postpone action on it until the applicant has time to talk with the town. But I believe the, the town of Madison is not in support of this, and it's also, it conflicts with many of the city Madison's policies for the development within their cooperative plan.
Okay. You understand?
Got it, yeah.
And who would, who would Felipe contact in the city, do you know?
In the town of Madison, it would be Renee Schwaz.
Yeah, I got, yeah, I got her name.
Okay, so you can get in touch with her?
Okay.
So, the only alternative would be a two-family dwelling unit. If they do not have that, well then, it'll have to stay a single-family house.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good.
All right. Would anyone else like to speak in support of this petition? I've got...
I would like, I'm the wife, and I want to...
Ma'am, come up here so we can hear you on the, we record these meetings. I wanna make sure that it's on the recording.
Sure.
And then identify yourself.
Well, my name is Olga. I'm the wife, the mom.
All right.
Well, the reason I, we wanna do that is because I wanna have my family close, and I don't want them to go and pay in another place, where they can be at home, and until they decide to move on, when they get like more older, or they wanna get married, or something like that. And rents are really expensive around, and if they are in college, well, I have my kids in college and in M A T C. But they are like teenagers, kind of, at eighteen, twenty years, then I don't want them really move out of my house, but I want to have them their own independence as well. And that way, they can be more like responsible, like having a place to live and that kind of stuff. That's the reason I want to have my kids close, but at the same time, independent.
Very good. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Would anyone like to speak in opposition? I've got Jennifer Fleishman?
Yeah. So, we live in the neighborhood too. It's on a dead-end street.
Sure. Come on up, Jennifer, come on up and identify yourself.
So, I'm Jennifer Fleishman. I live at one-thousand-eight Ridgeway.
Yes.
Most of the houses are very small. It's supposed to be a single-family house. I don't even know how you would get three apartments out of it. Our biggest concern is, on a dead-end street, it's already incredibly busy. The street itself has huge potholes, and it desperately needs to be fixed, and I don't know how we're ever even gonna get it fixed, because, and it's been like this for four or five years. We would like to see less people living on the street, not more. I'm sorry...
No, it's okay.
For your...
No, but I have, well, we will live with the same people, but actually will be living, like, in the same place, because my kids are still with me.
And I understand it, but what happens when you decide to move on, and then there's three apartments there?
Yeah, I think we'll save, you know, if you two...
Yeah.
Wanna take this debate back to your neighborhood, that would be probably a good idea.
Yeah. We, we just, I mean, we're, we're being crowded out by apartment buildings.
Right, right, right.
And we'd just rather keep it as residential as possible, so that's, that's our...
Your input is in the record?
Okay.
And according to our rules, we will have no choice but to postpone, and let's, well, have Roger give his report.
Okay.
Yes, the town of Madison has denied this petition. Also, the city of Madison has sent a letter stating that the zoning change is inconsistent with the Madison-Fitchburg Town of Madison Cooperative Plan.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioners?
Such a question for Roger, I did.
Yes, go right ahead, Supervisor Peters.
So to give a petitioner more time to potentially work with the town, maybe that would be, postpone, that would be in order there?
Yes, that's correct. We put on the, the next agenda, which would be April ninth, and I could give you a report on what the town said about having a duplex there.
Okay.
Or a two-family dwelling unit.
And according to our rules, because there's opposition, we're gonna postpone. So, if there are no further questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion for postponement.
Second.
You've got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion is, or the petition is postponed.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, are you clear on what to do now?
I'm sorry?
Are you clear on...
Yeah, it, yeah, it's, it's clear, yeah. So we've gotta move on to the next agenda.
Yes, you're gonna have to contact the town of Madison.
Okay.
Contact Renee Schwaz to see if a two-family dwelling unit would be acceptable. So they may put you on a committee agenda to see if... So, they may put you on, uh, a committee agenda, uh, to see if, uh, a lesser zoning would be acceptable. Uh, if not, well then, um, the committee will take action on this on April 9th?
Are you asking?
April 9th. Well, yeah, that's what it says.
Yeah, April 9th. April 9th.
Okay. In two weeks.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Hey, folks, thanks for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Uh, next we've got petition number 11395. Jim, Jim, uh, well, I've got David Wood here. No, that's, uh, 11396, David Wood. And I think we've got John, oh, we've got Dave Wood here. Also got Julie Wood. Hi, how are you folks?
Good.
Good. So, what can you tell us about your petition tonight?
Odd situation. We are in the town of Blooming Grove, which is also part of the county, as we've worked with, and we're also in the extraterritorial rights of the city of Madison, which has an annexation agreement that will annex Blooming Grove at that sunset date, I think, of Halloween of 2027. So, from a process standpoint, we've met with the town and got approvals. We met tonight and earlier with the county, and we've also met with the city of Madison back in around Thanksgiving time, their Tim Parkster planner. And I met with the DAT group last week, the Department of, uh, Assistance for Development, and they have since, Roger, they have relabeled the zoning to be a Parks and Recreation District, which is consistent with the use that we presented here with the event center concept. What we're trying to do is take the current two and a half acres alongside the bike trail and expand it to eight to be able to accommodate space for parking and area for new barn and take out the old barn. We've also met with the, uh, with Darren Marsh of Dane County Parks. We've been good partners with over the years, the Marsh tour, for the MFL program. A lot of this land is in a managed forest law program for a bunch of years, and with Kenny Lopide was on board, we met with him to talk about what to do to be in concert with that boundary line. And again, to renew that interest, we took this plan to see Darren Marsh and his staff a couple of weeks ago. Uh, they sent a nice letter off to the city. I think I sent something off to Hans that supported our program from the ecology standpoint of not just doing weddings, but doing weekday events, um, burning seminars, nature seminars, photography, Julie's, you thought, burnerships. There's a lot more to this than just a wedding event.
Mm-hmm.
So, the idea is an eighty-eight, eighty-by-eight structure, designed to look like a wedding barn, like an old, old structure with timber post and beams. I think you got a picture there somewhere along the line.
Yeah.
But it's, it's, it's supposed to look like an old-fashioned barn. We're trying to bring back the heritage of it. It's not gonna be some metal looking structure. And, um, we've met with, uh, I've met with the city of Madison Police Department and I met with the city of Madison Fire Department. I've talked to Sheriff Dave because for the short term, while this is still in the county, Sheriff Dave will be in charge of it. Also talked to Pittsburgh, talked to fire. We have got a fire station with Pittsburgh, about eight miles away. We've got another fire station, Station 6 on Park Street, 2.6 miles away. Um, we're gonna have this thing sprinkled with a water system because we are on our own municipal Madison Metropolitan Sewer Strick sewer line, which feeds down through Meadow View, Zurker Court, out to Lake Wabisa, but we'll be on our own well. So, we have to have our own sprinkler system holding tank of water. So, the concept is a concrete floor, low maintenance, easy to work with. I guess I, at this point, any, any questions from anybody?
I don't have any. Committee, you have any questions?
Nope.
Okay, is that your report?
Unless there's something else I can share with you, would you?
Okay. Um, would anyone like, else like to speak in favor of this petition? Then I'll move on to, uh, registering in opposition. Um, we've got, uh, Jim Heber wishing to speak in opposition. David, well, let's start with Jim. Jim, would you like to come up and speak in opposition since you registered that way?
Is Jim here? Anyone? No?
Okay. David Branley. You're, you're registered in opposition, wishing to speak in opposition.
If you want to sit back in the, the audience, the opposition will have a chance to address the committee. Thank you.
Hey, David? Hi. My name is David Branley. I live at 3153 Zurker Court in the town of Dunn. I am a neighbor to David Wood, the petitioner. I built my house in 1998 because of the location. Dave Wood is, became my neighbor a short few years later and he built a large home and dug a large pond, which he stocked with fish. He planted a great amount of trees and maintained a fine property with large wooded areas, many of which he created, along with a cornfield that he rents out. He also owns a three-level house with a garage and an outbuilding on another parcel next to his home property. It is on this parcel where he's proposing the zoning change, as I understand it. David is a very good steward of the land. He keeps things wild and natural as possible. I can sit on my deck and observe deer and turkeys on Dave's land. Every spring and fall, the geese come. The turkeys and deer come into my yard also. They're welcome. We are not too far from the maddening crowd of Madison, only three to four miles from Park and the Belt Line. We do not have any commercial business in our close neighborhood. We truly are out of the way and we like it that way. The silence can be deafening at night, except for the Belt Line tires, but you get used to that after a while. Pittsburgh is building a massive housing development just around the corner, along with a new school. My country living is being squeezed smaller and smaller. The idea of a wedding rental facility nearby on Dave's land is a total surprise, given the effort he's made for the land in and around his house. A rental facility will bring noise and traffic to the neighborhood. The entrance off Larson Road is just beyond a sharp ninety-degree corner. It's an obvious traffic hazard. Have you ever attended a quiet wedding? I suspect the noise and the music will easily be heard in the neighborhood. Wedding celebrants make a lot of noise celebrating this fine event. Many other types of meetings can also be loud. I will be able to hear the music, and music, of course, is in the ear of the beholder. It will change the character of the neighborhood. Dave is requesting a change to commercial for the wedding facility. The town of Blooming Grove is going to disappear into the city of Madison in the near future. I doubt the city of Madison would entertain this zoning request. County land with a very active bike trail borders this planned facility. The county land is open country with a flowing creek and natural fields and a very, very busy bike trail. Plans are for a venue of approximately two hundred and fifty to three hundred people, a hundred parking spots, and outdoor lights. I want to be sure that this zoning request only concerns the area on the map for the wedding meeting facility and not the majority of Dave's property, and that it will remain as it is zoned now. I like having the view of the woods and the field across the street. I never even got a notice of this zoning change and only learned about it from one of my neighbors. This shouldn't happen. If a neighbor didn't call me, I would have never known. I oppose the zoning change to commercial and the facility.
Okay, David, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Any comment or any questions to David? Okay. Uh, next we have, uh, speaking in opposition is Helen Koppes.
Like in Copacetic?
Koppes.
And I promised to talk louder than Dave. I couldn't hear anything, but I just learned of this also, and I'm very sad. I will just show you real quick. Um, I am right here and my son is right here, and this is where the noise is going to be. And this is where David is. He was just up here, just so you have a little clearer of where we are.
Very good.
Thank you for hearing me tonight, and I promise again, I'll be a little loud. Um, I have lived at that address, 4825 East Clayton Road, for fifty-two years. October 1st, 1967, I moved in. It's been a privilege living here, a total, total privilege, and I've raised two sons and two granddaughters, only a few doors down, like at the end of the road there. I bring my opposition to you tonight for your consideration and hope that at a minimum a deed restriction can be applied to the proposed rezoning requested by Mr. Woods. As I understand the handout document that I finally got ahold of, the reason for the requested zoning change is to allow for commercial uses for wedding reception facility, those, those words. I am in fact confused why the outdoor entertainment and residential use proposed is also included and note that no limitation of use is considered. Important sentence here. This open-ended rezoning request allows for just about anything. There's no restrictions. Be, I mean, even after what's that, wedding site's done, what's next? This existing area is a pristine example of millions and millions of dollars of Dane County funding to provide a paved, plowed bike path for people of all ages to enjoy wooden bridges installed with beautiful scenic views. There's a dog park utilized by many, many people. There's a disco playground area. There's a camping site and within a short distance, another wedding venue with lovely indoor facilities, uh, which was just used by one of my granddaughters, in fact, who wanted an outdoor nature-packed setting for their special day. I certainly am not opposed to weddings. My concerns include that ninety-degree turn at the corner of the country roads, East Clayton and Larson. Where will the parking be provided for guests? Well, now I've just since seen a picture of it, so I guess there's some parking. Again, I'm, I'm surprised at the secretive nature of this whole process. I'm stunned that David hasn't notified neighbors. I'm disappointed in him. What about the noise level late at night? The house directly across the street, my son's, is within feet of the woods property. I am six residential properties up. I would be more insulated from the noise, but I would be wary of the celebration mood of the guests driving fast up and down the road. In fact, local car dealerships are ready to direct potential new car buyers to Clayton-Larson Road to test drive their cars. I can hear the squealing of tires at the ninety-degree turn. I'm amazed someone hasn't been already killed. As I understand, the township of Blooming Grove has already approved this project. However, I understand that the city of Madison will be absorbing Blooming Grove. And again, I just, it's like, okay, is this move today to avoid Madison intervention? I never received a notice, even though I'm six residential properties up for Mr. Woods. My neighbors did not receive a notice. I only found out about this meeting by accident. I'm, I wish I could say I'm speechless, but I never am. C1 zoning, as I understand, allows just about anything commercial. Could we at a minimum encourage you folks to rezone the property with a deed restriction, limiting the wedding venue to indoor entertainment or limiting it so that it's just this wedding project that he wants to pursue? What else is going to be coming in with a, a simple C1 zoning? Mr. Woods provides commercial storage buildings in other neighborhoods. Is his intention to build more storage buildings in this pristine, nature-flowing, primarily county-owned property? Is this a mission that we don't know about? I feel like my county tax dollars are going to be wasted. I've been very proud of the county for their diligence in nature-driven, environmentally-friendly areas for citizens to enjoy.
Helen, you've got, excuse me, you've got thirty seconds left.
Please reconsider the rezoning request or at a minimum, please deed restrict the property to wedding reception, reception indoor entertainment.
Thank you for your input.
Thank you.
For your very...
Thank you for listening.
Not a problem. Next wishing to speak in opposition is Guy Gurski.
Um, before I sit down, I'm Guy Gurski. I live at 3137 Zurker Court, which is just in this general area right here as well. Um, so along with what Dave and Helen have spoken to, I won't reiterate everything because they both spoke very eloquently about my concerns as well. So, there's really nothing additional, um, other than the fact that I've been in that area since 2000. And the same kinda thing, we moved to that general area because of the rural nature of that neighborhood and the expectations of that type of environment. Um, the, um, again, the residential development going up the road, very disturbing to us, the noise level, the late night, the lighted area. Um, I take, um, the bike path seriously. I use it, and I'm concerned about that being disruptive as well. It's, it's highly, highly used on a regular basis for joggers and bicyclists, and it's, it's a great path, and it's, um, again, used, used continuously. Um, I'm, I'm also opposed to the zoning, uh, of, of any type of use there, to be honest with you, even though it was approved. You know, I, I really feel that this should be left undeveloped as it is right now, so...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gurski.
You bet.
Appreciate you coming up. Um, anyone else wishing to speak in favor or opposition at this time? Sir?
I didn't put down that I was gonna speak, is it still okay to speak?
Still okay to speak.
All right.
But when you, when you...
Thank you, thank you.
But when you, uh, come on up, identify yourself.
Sure.
When you're done, fill out, fill out a form.
Sure, I filled one out, but I just, I didn't put that up.
Oh, what was your name?
Mike Lemon.
Oh, I do have one here for you.
All right, and I, I'm gonna point out where I live. I hope you can all see me better. I, I live here on Zurker Court as well.
Got it.
Um, so, again, some of the same concerns that have voiced is, as I look out, there'll be a large parking lot here with lights, um, and it's really light protected in that area. Um, we do not have a lot of streetlights. We don't have any on our block or our area there, or down to the corner there are, so I'm concerned about the light pollution in the area, the noise. Um, again, I, I was surprised, I had no idea that much of this was approved. Uh, in fact, this is the first I heard of it, this last week. So, my concerns are how that all happened so quickly, why no one notified us. Um, is it approved? I guess that's another thing I...
No.
No, okay, so, uh, by Blooming Grove? No?
Not, is it by Blooming Grove?
Okay, and we were never, never notified.
But this group...
So, that's disturbing to me.
This group has not ruled on it.
No, but it's disturbing to me that we weren't notified that that was even in the process. So, um, with, again, light pollution, a large parking lot with lights, the traffic, that there is only one way in and out of there. So, there's, that's gonna add a lot of traffic Friday, Saturday, Sunday for weddings during the week as well. Um, you know, initially when I heard of that, I thought, yeah, I'm not opposed to, to weddings at the house there and, and a, and a small area barn, small weddings, but three hundred guests and a hundred car parking lot, that's a little different. So, again, I have the same concerns, the wildlife in the area. I've been there about thirty years.
Okay.
So, so just wanted to register that opposition.
We appreciate that. You must be Donna?
I'm Donna.
You're Donna, Donna Farrow.
Yeah. And I have the same concerns. It's rural, it's quiet, there's lots of wildlife, lights at night will be disruptive to those populations, and I, I don't know any wedding where people don't drink. I don't wanna come home from my sober night out to encounter someone leaving the wedding under the influence, and, and that is a hazard, it's a risk.
I understand.
Especially late at night, eleven o'clock at night, noise and lights. Especially late at night, eleven o'clock at night, noise, lights, and music.
All right. If that's all your comments, thank you very much for coming up and voicing your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, now the petitioner is allowed three minutes for rebuttal. Pardon?
Three minutes, that's not very long.
Well, you started up, you started up the meeting, so.
Well, thank you for coming in. I'm sorry that they didn't get a notice, because our understanding is that the county sends it out to all the area around people where we are.
Well, I think Roger will speak to that.
Do they not get a notice if they live within a certain radius of the property?
We track all of those and.
Because that was our understanding, is that everyone was getting a notice. Right, they're not in the Blooming Grove, but our understanding was when it's the county, then it's a bigger, it's not just the township.
You know, I apologize for people not seeing this document, which I got, which I know people in Pittsburgh got, because I had breakfast with a gentleman a long time ago, and this document, so I can't manage the mail, folks, so first of all.
Approximately about a month ago, everybody in that, whoever owns that in blue, got a mailing.
So they should have gotten it because they live in that area.
And these are all the names that they were mailed out to.
Interesting.
So that's all the names.
As I said, I, we did get ours.
Okay, so they were not informed of the Town of Blooming Grove meetings.
Okay, so I guess one thing we want to say is I appreciate that Dave said that we take good care of the land, because that is very important to us, to keep that nature. And I'm not sure where the outdoor entertainment thing came, because that's not, I don't think we're even thinking about outdoor entertainment at all, at least at night.
Typically, there's two types of things going on with a wedding. There's a ceremony if you decide not to have it at church. Now, we're just talking about the wedding piece of yours. And that's where you actually do the vows, and then you go inside and you have the gathering. And we're talking primarily the reception, which is indoors. And I think we talked a little bit about the, whether getting out or not getting out, okay? And we were very careful about where we put that location to not impact the neighbors from the view from a lighting and so on and so forth. And again, I met with Darren Marsh, who is applauding the concept. If you see the letter he sent to you guys, he said to me, you find what he's doing, we think it's an asset. We don't see this as a competitive issue with Lucy Harret Center. And again, I'm being managed by the city of Madison in terms of the traffic consideration, in terms of the noise decibel level that Roger's going to challenge, so we maintain that as well, as the city. We have stringent lighting plans for the parking lot to make sure that the candlelight power and the light is managed properly along with landscaping. There's a screening concept, they add more trees, as Dave knows, I think I've got six rows of trees alongside the bike trail now. And there's a plan to add more to mitigate the look there. And I don't know where you get the comment about storage, but that is totally wrong and inappropriate.
You do that for a living.
Yeah, but that's.
But that's not, yeah, that's not an inappropriate comment, okay?
So, and then we will put trees along the top of the hill where there's the parking, so it blocks the light from Zirker Court too. So there will be a barrier there of, you know, trees and several rows of trees, so that they are not seeing that part. And it's, you can't see it from here, but it's, there's a hill that goes up, and then this hill, there's another hill. So they won't be seen.
City traffic is aware of the right angle, so is the town, they know they want to sign it better, they work with Pittsburgh on that, so that's all something to talk about. Again, guys, this has not been done in vacuum. This has not been done anyway in terms of being underhanded, I think as Dave has talked, we've always been good neighbors, so.
So, and one of the things is we want to work with the hotels that are close, like Sheraton and all the ones that are around Olin Avenue, and see if we can work with them to have shuttles that come out, so we don't have all the traffic. And we don't have drunk drivers and all of that coming back and forth. And we, the Clayton Road goes like straight into this, and I understand about what you're saying about your son's house, because it is the closest house, and it's probably the only house that would be really affected by the barn.
I know we're not allowed to debate, so when would we be able to?
If you'd just give us a second here, I'm going to let the Woods finish their rebuttal here before we move on to other things.
Again, we take a strong consideration to traffic, to lighting, the impact of the neighborhood. Noise. All of the municipal partners that we talked to, from the county to the town, to the city, all have got protection measures, so I'm going to leave on it. Quite frankly, with all due respect, Roger, the city of Madison will be more stringent on their plans for lighting and noise and traffic at the city level than the county.
Okay, thanks, folks, and I appreciate your rebuttal. And it was very informative, I hope everybody got their, some of their questions answered, but I'm going to, I think we're done with the public comments and all, and favorite. Yeah, right here.
Where, is your own home still on the map somewhere?
Yeah, so, can I see it?
I'll go to him.
And I guess one other thing, you know, they talked about the development, and right across the street, they're basically going to be building a thousand houses, so our neighborhood's going to change, even if we don't have a barn there.
Thousand homes, Terra Best is going in here. There'll be rooftops by the end of the year. In fact, to the comments, I've been working with Blooming Grove and Pittsburgh to make sure we don't have water problems there, because as we know, the intersection, Dave, they're pretty rough.
Dave, would you speak at the microphone, please?
Okay, so we're working with the other factions to make sure not just what we're doing in our world, but that that intersection over there is managed with that development, because it's going to be a challenge with a thousand homes coming in at Pittsburgh.
Thank you, folks. I guess we'll move on now to the staff report.
The Town of Blooming Grove has approved this rezoning as well as the conditional use permit with regards to the rezoning. They approved that with no conditions. Given the testimony, there are possible limitations that could be imposed on the commercial zoning district to limit to the land uses to the ones specified. The city of Madison has spoke in favor of this, and they are also looking at this and reviewing it to the city of Madison's ordinances. Staff has suggested, as for the conditional use permit, the Town of Blooming Grove has approved it with seven conditions. I'm sorry, they approved it with no conditions, but staff is suggesting sixteen conditions that place limits on lighting, decibel levels, hours of operation, having the parking area paved, and if any intersection improvements are needed, that it is on the landowner's expense.
Okay, then Helen had a question about when this is going to be back before the committee, any idea?
This will be back before the committee on April ninth.
Helen, does that answer your question?
So does that mean we can come back with more neighbors that we might be able to alert?
This is the public hearing. So this is the testimony from the neighborhood right now.
So this is it, so then what's the next meeting about?
Unless you're called on.
Oh, I see, okay.
You can ask to be recognized, and if a member of the committee recognizes you, yes, you may speak. Okay? Roger?
So with the public testimony, there are concerns regarding noise, lighting, traffic, light pollution, drunk people, again, noise, and also the broad land uses that are in the C-one commercial zoning district. Staff will take a look at those and look at conditions to mitigate those potential nuisances. And then a staff report will be generated to address those concerns. It will be before the Zoning and Land Regulation Committee on April ninth to review, to see if the concerns from the neighbors have been mitigated by conditions.
Okay. According to our committee rules, because there is opposition, we're going to, we're going to have to postpone this petition and the CUP. So at this time, I'll look to the committee for a motion to postpone the rezon. Second, and any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
The rezon has been postponed. Next up is the CUP, and again, because we have public opposition, I will entertain a motion for postponement. All those in favor? Aye, motion carries, the CUP is also postponed until the ninth, is that correct, Roger?
That is correct.
Okay, thanks, folks. Okay, we move on to petition one-one-three-nine-seven, Ralph Kipley. Hi, Ralph.
I'm Dan.
Hi, Dan.
That's my dad, Ralph.
Hi, Ralph.
So.
Oh, just explain what you want to do.
Yeah, explain your petition.
What my dad's planning, wanting to do is separate his residency from the farmland.
Okay. All right. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Would anyone like to speak in opposition? Hearing none, I'll move on to the staff report.
Yes, the Town of Roxbury has approved this petition. However, the town action report was received late, it came in yesterday. So I did receive that from Mr. Ping's. Before you tonight, there is a copy of the town action report. Staff suggests that the committee rules be postponed and accept the town action report in order to take action on this petition.
Postponed, is that the correct word?
Suspended.
Huh?
Suspended.
Suspended, okay, that's what I, postponed didn't sound right, but we've been saying that a lot tonight, so. Okay, I look for a motion to suspend the rules so that we can consider the town action report.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It carries, the rules are suspended, and we can consider the town action report.
Well, the Town of Roxbury has approved this with no conditions. Staff is suggesting that a deed restriction be placed on the balance of the farm to prohibit further residential development due to the fact that the housing density rights have been exhausted.
So are you folks familiar with that? Is that new to you, the deed restriction?
Well, the deed restriction is kind of surprising, we should have two building sites there, under the acreage. Because he's using up one with the farm now, residency rate?
I have no idea, because I did not write the staff report.
Okay. Well, we suspended the rules so we could take this up, but if we, if there is a question about that deed restriction, I'm wondering if we should postpone it. How do you feel about that?
I recommend that you postpone it, I'll follow up.
Okay, so what does, what does that mean?
That means that we'll hear it again on April.
No, I mean, what did Bob put in there?
Bob put that, well, it's right there, that the town action report says that the town board approved this with no conditions. However, the planner that developed the staff report, and you got a, hopefully, you got a copy of that, that it says, "Staff also suggests deed restricting the balance of the farm as the housing density rights have all been used." So.
Okay, yeah, I guess you're right, I misunderstood that, there is another, there's a commercial piece there.
Okay.
That would be, I misunderstood that, is that, what that means is, there's a piece of commercial in, that would take up one of the the building site?
Has, has one of the planners contacted you regarding this at all, or anything?
No.
Okay, who's the planner?
Jim Mosman, is that would be the planner?
No.
He's a surveyor.
Kurt Codel? Kurt Codel is the planner? We're going to have to talk with Kurt Codel, to see exactly.
Okay, you folks understand that we're going to postpone this till the next meeting, so we get this straightened out?
I apologize for that.
Yeah, we'll follow up.
Okay.
I would advise that for, just to get clarification, so we know exactly where things are at though, so we don't make a mistake tonight.
But you folks understand what we're doing, we're just going to delay this until the next meeting?
Till the ninth.
Yep.
Do we have to bring anything else out of what we have here?
No, no, if it's all straightened out, I really don't need to appear. We'll all be in contact with you to rectify this measure, to set everything right, okay?
Okay.
Okay, sorry about the delay, we did our best, all right, we suspended the rules for a little while.
We're almost there.
We're almost there, but next meeting we'll get it taken care of. And again, it's just a matter of the deed restriction.
Yeah.
You know, it'd just be a matter of finding out whether you need that or not.
Yeah, that's my concern with that piece of property.
Yeah, yeah, that's important.
Okay.
Okay.
With that, I'll entertain a motion for postponement. Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion is postponed.
We will be on the agenda then?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
We do not have to appear?
That's correct, I'll be in contact with you.
Is it in our best interest to appear or not?
Roger will give you the.
If there are any concerns or anything like that, I'll be in contact with you to go over housing density rights and everything, okay?
All right, thank you.
Good night, folks.
Good night.
Okay. We're getting through this one way together. Next up is rezon number one-one-three-nine-eight, Oris and Elaine Fazin. And we have Mr. Bessby speaking on that petition, how are you, Dale?
Pardon, good. Good to see you, my friend, again. My name is Dale Bessby, and I am a trustee of the Oris and Elaine Ultimus Fazin Trust. Oris is my uncle, and Elaine was my aunt. The Ultimus family owns, has owned this farm since the eighteen-fifties. My late aunt was the last Ultimus to be raised in the house. After her parents died, the house was vacant for a number of years. And my aunt decided in nineteen ninety that it was time to restore the house, so she did that. And after doing the restoration, putting in a new septic, putting in a new well, things like that, the house was rented out for a while to different people. And then in two thousand and five, the house was rented to Marge Stockstad, who was with me here tonight. And she has operated it since then as a B and B. The permit for the, there was a conditional use permit issued to, I believe, Elaine and Marge both in two thousand and five. Marge became a five percent owner of the property at that time, because a B and B operator has to be an owner of the property and so on. Anyway, last, after my aunt passed away, there were instructions that the property should be sold to Marge. That sale was completed in December of twenty eighteen. And the only issue that resulted from that was that the two-acre parcel that's shown there in black contained the septic tanks, but not the drain field. When the septic was put in, there was no suitable land within those two acres. The drain field was put along the edge of the brush line shown there. And so what we'd like to do now is to extend the property to be a three-acre parcel, so that the entire drain field will be included within the B and B parcel. And that will require adding one point zero-three acres outlined in red. And the, we would like to have the conditional use permit for the B and B to continue in Marge's name on this, so that she doesn't have any issues in the future about, you know, the ownership being different, things like that. And so that's basically what we've done, we did take it to the Dunkirk PC and Board, and they have approved it, and so we're basically here to ask for approval.
Okay, thanks for your report, Dale. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Hearing none, I'll look to the staff, the staff report.
The Town of Dunkirk has approved this petition with no conditions.
Approval? Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The petition is approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next up, we've got rezon number one-one-three-nine-nine. Betty, go right ahead. Roger?
Betty Chadwick is actually at the Town of Christiana's board meeting tonight because the town board is actually reviewing this petition as we speak.
Oh, that's the density report, right?
So, we couldn't split her in half and so...
Very good. So, I'll look for a motion to postpone this petition.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second? Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are postponed on one-one-three-nine-nine. We've got rezon number one-one-four-hundred. Brett Myers.
How are you?
Well, you doing okay? I know you had to wait a bit. Sorry about that.
Oh, well, there's always good stuff to listen to. So, I purchased thirty-six acres of land in the town of Primrose, and I'm looking to rezone it to put up a residence.
Okay. Alright, anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
Yes, the town of Primrose has approved this petition. They approved the condition that the applicant must record a notice on the property that states that all residential development units have been exhausted on the property and further residential development is prohibited. Staff is also suggesting three conditions, that the landowner record the deed restriction as requested by the town. And then, also identify the proposed building site that was... That the town of Primrose has decided on as a site that's actually kind of upside down. But you can see that there is a building site just to the... On the southern side of the property. So, that needs to be recorded in a fashion. And then, also a deed restriction limiting livestock to one animal unit per acre.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the committee?
Just a quick question. Were you aware of the conditions and do you already accept?
Yes. Okay. Alright. I'd entertain a motion at this time.
Will approval of conditions?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to accept this with conditions? Any further discussion? All those are... All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thanks, Brett.
Alright, thank you. Have a good evening.
I'll move on to rezon number eleven-thousand-four-zero-one. Russell Dahl.
I'm Tim's son.
Okay, Tim.
Uh, what we'd like to do is... So, my dad owns all the land around that. We'd like to just split early in that big square he owns. We'd like to split the, what was an existing home site for an old farmhouse. We'd like to split that off and rezone it from A-one exclusive, I think, to RH-one. So that I can build a new home on there.
Very good. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The town of Deerfield has approved this petition with no conditions.
I'd entertain a motion or questions from the committee at this time.
Approval? Second.
Got a motion and a second? Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Russell, you're all set.
Alright. Thank you.
Next, we have rezon number eleven-thousand-four-hundred-two. Kathy Leverens. And she's also has a CUP twenty-four-fifty-five.
Hey, I'm Brandon.
Brandon.
That's my mom. We're Alpine Ridge Orchard. We started a few years ago. I live at four-zero-zero-five St. East Drive in Madison. And we're looking to do the rezon on a front parcel. It's eight and a half acres. And it would be going from the RR-eight to the new RM-eight for a mixed use because the whole orchard operates on the forty-three acres. And we do have parking in a corn maze on that front parcel. And with that, we wanted to do the conditional use for all the activities that we want to do and currently do on the farm.
Alright. That's your report?
Yep.
Very good. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
Uh, the town of Oregon has approved the rezoning petition. They approved it with no conditions. They also approved the conditional use permit with seven conditions. Staff has incorporated those conditions into the seventeen suggested conditions by staff.
Okay. I do have a question. In the notes on the petition, you requested the name of a new owner. Is that appropriate or... No?
The name of the...
New owner. There's no new owner, right?
No, the land's been in the family for thirty years.
I don't know where that came from. So, we'll just strike that. And...
I don't think there was any... That wasn't a part of the conditions, I believe.
So, we'll take up the rezon first? And I'll entertain a motion for staff regarding the rezon. So moved. Can I have a second, please?
I would.
Okay. And then, is that with... There were no... Were there conditions on the rezon?
There was not.
Okay. So, we've got a motion and a second to approve the zoning on the rezon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have CUP twenty-four-fifty-five. And that is with the conditions?
There are seventeen conditions. I could go over those or... Well, the...
Are you in agreement with seventeen?
I'm good.
Okay.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the re... The re... The CUP with seventeen conditions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Brandon? You're all set.
Thanks, sir. You have a good evening.
What kind of apples you gonna raise out there?
I get thirty varieties right now.
Thirty?
I got four more coming in a couple of months. Here in a month. So...
Alright.
Stop one else sometime.
Okay. Next, we have rezon number one-one-four-zero-three. Patrick... Well, that's the Wisconsin Telephone Company, so we have Patrick here representing the phone company.
Nope.
No?
Representing transmission company.
The trans... ATC?
Yes.
Very good.
Patrick Cowall, the senior lands surveying specialist at ATC, representing both ATC and Wisconsin Telephone for the project. Uh, we're currently seeking to rezon A-one exclusive lands into C-one and A-one exclusive lands into A-four. A little background on why we're doing this is currently we have a C-one parcel, zoning parcel out there. You can see an octagon building on there. It's going to be raised and a new office building put basically right on top of it. And to the east, we are proposing a parking lot over there. So, in order to make all the lands in accordance with their proposed uses, we're seeking rezoning.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
This is town of Pleasant Springs also.
Okay. Thank you. Roger?
Yeah, the town of Pleasant Springs have approved this petition. They requested that a deed restriction be placed on the A-dash-four zoning parcel to prohibit future development.
You're nodding your head, so I assume you're okay with that. I'd entertain a motion from the committee on that.
So moved. Second.
And we did get the town action on that?
Yes, they approved it with a... Requesting a deed restriction be placed on the A-dash-four parcel prohibiting future development.
Very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you.
Next, we have CUP twenty-four-fifty-four. James Arlovi. Are you James?
Sorry, did I jump ahead? Twenty-four-fifty-two. No.
Oh, twenty-four-fifty-two. I think...
Yeah, I'm Jerome Lund.
Okay, Jerome.
Two-two-two East Avenue, Madison, Wisconsin. And I'm employed by Alliant Energy. Alliant is asking for approval of a conditional use permit to install a new distribution substation on that approximately ten-acre parcel in the town of Christiana. We did appear in front of the planning committee for the township who conditionally approved that conditional use permit. The conditions out for that approval were that we would go back and look at the storm water plan that was done by Montgomery Associates for the proposed site. So, again, then, it went to the town board. They tabled it until we can get that storm water plan done, redone. So, in essence, I'm just asking for the ZLR committee to postpone this until we can get that plan done. We promised the town that we would look at any impacts of the recent reconstruction of the interstate. We would update the storm water plan if they did find any conditions that have changed since they did the original plan, which was back in eighteen. And then, prior to going back to the town board, we will get approval from the DNR of that storm water plan in the county. So, we just want to make sure that if this gets approved, that this will not exacerbate any drainage problems and hopefully improve the drainage. I did include a plan that I gave... Well, there it is, Roger's got it. And maybe in anticipation of a future meeting back here, you might look at that. And then, a memo came in today from Montgomery Associates, which kind of highlights what they discovered in the drainage pattern and how they will address that in the new storm water plan, which hopefully will make the situations better because it does drain off to the southeast corner there. And we don't want to make it any worse to the east of County Trump Delhi.
Okay.
So, I'm just asking for a postpone until we can...
Not a problem.
Get the storm water approved.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
Uh, this petition is still pending at the town of Christiana due to storm water concerns.
Do we need to make a motion to introduce this to the record? Or should I give it to you?
I just think it's for informational purposes.
Okay.
I'll scan it in. All these things will be scanned in because it's just additional information.
Very good. Alright. Any questions from the staff? I'd entertain a motion to postpone it this time.
Postpone pending town action? Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The petition is postponed.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jerome.
Okay.
Jessica Vaughn. Petition number one. Pardon?
You skipped one.
I'm same as one here.
No. It's a...
James L. Boyd. Boy, I got ahead of myself here.
James L. Boyd, one-zero-three-seven-nine, County Road Y. CUP for the purpose of retaining the home that is on the property that we live in. Looking for caretakers, CUPs on a commercial piece of property. Never had a CUP. We're just trying to correct that. And then, in the future, may do some improvements.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak in support of this petition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Hearing none? Roger, your report, please.
Uh, yes, the town of Mazie-Manie has approved the conditional use permit. However, their town action report was late. They had approved this petition, or this conditional use permit with no conditions. Staff is suggesting three conditions be placed on the conditional use permit. That the, number one, the new and existing buildings proposed to house a conditional use permit must be constructed to applicable building codes. The conditional use permit is for a resident of the business owner and rental of the residence is prohibited.
How late was that report?
It's a good question.
With your best estimate?
Monday.
Monday. So, would it be appropriate to entertain a motion to suspend the rules and accept this?
I would suggest that.
Okay. So, I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules and accept this report?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to do that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We're gonna accept the town action report so you don't have to come back? Alright. So, are you in agreement with all the conditions?
Yep.
You gave your report, right? I'm just kind of track everything.
That's correct.
Been a long evening. So...
Move approval with conditions?
Thank you. Got a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Jim? We got your...
Thank you, guys.
Dennis Nolan. CUP twenty-four-fifty-six.
I'm actually... My name is Jay Went. I represent Bug Tussle Wireless.
Okay.
Company making the request. At present, the CUP that we're requesting is for the construction of a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot communication tower. At this time, we have not been in front of the town, so that's a big issue for us as well. Additionally, a report came out that staff had requested a firm called Citiescape of a secondary RF analysis that came out a little over a week ago. And we'd like to be able to respond to that, and we haven't had quite a chance to get our ducks in a row. So, we are requesting postponement from them.
Okay. Thank you. Sharon Robinson? Are you here?
Yes, sir.
Pardon?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you didn't check your firm. Are you here to speak in support or opposition? Are you here to speak in support or opposition?
We would be speaking in opposition.
Okay. Jay Went, you wish to speak in re...
Just yet.
That's you, okay. And... We have Kevin Pollard.
Yep.
Wishing to speak in opposition.
Yep.
Okay, why don't you go ahead, Kevin? And I'll come back for Sharon, sorry. I didn't know if I had more to give to you. Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Kevin Pollard. I'm a representative of S B A Communications. S B A, um, owns an existing telecommunications tower located approximately one point two miles to the southwest of the proposed tower site. Um, I just have, I have some information. I don't know if I can submit it to you guys now for the record or...
You can submit it.
So, the first document is a letter from the site manager for S B A Communications, Kent Meyer. And this letter simply indicates that the exist, the existing tower, um, does have capacity and can accommodate equipment for Bug Tussle Wireless at the existing tower. It also establishes that Bug Tussle has not contacted S B A with regard to the feasibility of co-location. Um, there is an attachment, which is an email exchange between Mr. Meyer from S B A and a representative of Mobileites, um, who's apparently affiliated with Bug Tussle, where they inquired about the height of the tower, but it went no further than that. There was no, uh, communications regarding the cost of co-location or the, the coverage analysis. Um, so we'd like to have that, um, submitted for the record. And then the second document, which I have, is a radio frequency propagation analysis, which was conducted by a radio frequency engineer on behalf of S B A Communications. And this analysis, um, it contains comparisons for the coverage, the radio frequency coverage, uh, between the two sites. I can walk you through it if you want, but I don't know if you...
Define propagation, what it means in frequency terms.
Uh, essentially, it's, uh, this map is showing the strength of the coverage, um, the strength of the signal from... So, every other page, like, one page would be coverage from the existing tower for S B A at seven hundred, uh, millahertz. The next page would be the comparison of coverage based on the applicant's new proposed site at the same frequency, seven hundred millahertz. And then it goes on to show it at different frequency strengths. Um, and what the, and then the first page is a report which summarizes the findings. And, um, what the engineer found was essentially the, the comparison is cov, the comparison, the coverage is comparable, um, with differences being attributed simply to the separation distance between the two tower locations, which is one point two miles. And also, if you know, because the, the proposed site to the north is at a much lower elevation, so th- there are, the frequent, the coverage from that site would not extend to the south, which is like below, I think that's Highway ninety-two, because it, it gets higher up there. So, there's almost no coverage to the south. And the coverage to the north and northeast is basically attributed to the one point two mile difference in location. So, we believe, essentially, what, I mean, we believe that the coverage is substantially the same from either site. And so, the, our, our main position, I guess, is that the application does not comply with the state statute, which requires the applicant to explore the possibility of co-location, uh, to an existing tower. And they haven't provided, uh, the required statement that's required in the statute, showing that they've done that and why they can't co- co-locate on the art tower.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your report. And next up, we have Sharon and David Robinson. Pardon?
I'll, I'll allow David to speak.
Oh, David, David's, David's welcome.
Yeah, thanks. I, I must say, getting started, I, I'm David Robinson. My wife's Sharon Robinson, Sharon Lampman Robinson. Um, her family has owned, uh, our farm since about nineteen sixty-four. We're right here.
Okay.
And so, our farm extends down to here. And then the tower is right across from us.
Okay.
So, uh, we got notified, um, that this was, um, pending. And so, uh, since then, I've been educating myself a little bit on, uh, wireless tower construction and antenna towers. Our main concern stemmed from just the rural nature of the property around here. There's not much in the way of tall structures anywhere near here. So, it's a very pleasant view. It's treed, there are, you know, nice farms, people take care of their land. The tower that's proposed is two-hundred-and-fifty feet tall with guy wires. So, it's gonna have the wires coming out supporting it. There's a big TV antenna west of Madison that has that same situation. I think it's, I think it's much taller. Two-hundred-and-fifty feet, or two-hundred-and-fifty-five feet, I think it is now. Um, the Statue of Liberty, the statue itself is a hundred-and-fifty feet tall. When you put it on its base, it comes to three hundred and a little bit. So, this is gonna be really tall, really visible. Um, they're gonna have to put a light on the top and a light, uh, lower down. So, it's gonna have, I think, red on top and then a white light lower. So, we're gonna see it all the time. The entrance, I, I saw conflicting information about where to enter to service this tower. Um, it looked like there was gonna be, um, at first, there was something about entering off of, uh, Jimtown Road, or, I mean Fritz Road. And then, um, it's closer, the Bug Tussle label there is closer to Montrose. They had also talked about an entrance there. So, it wasn't clear to me, uh, where that entrance was gonna be, uh, how much traffic that would generate. So, our, our concern is more that it kind of spoils the nature of the, of the agricultural kind of pastoral setting that we've been, uh, living in for a long time now. And I know the county has gone to great lengths to try and preserve that. And the township itself, with its deep restrictions, um, we want to preserve the, the farming nature of the area. And I think it's gonna stick out and be pretty ugly. Um, and, you know, if it were really, really necessary, um, maybe we'd all have to, uh, take a bullet for everyone else and have that built there. But it sounds like there's an alternate that could provide, uh, equivalent service. And it doesn't sound like they've pursued seriously any kind of negotiation with the company that, the company whose business strategy is, is to build these towers and then, uh, hang antennas on them or hang equipment on them. So, I think they should explore all the alternatives, um, and, uh, including maybe locating in a different place, just because there's just nothing like this around where this is. And it's gonna change the nature of what our neighborhood looks like. And, and right now, um, it's really, uh, a pretty, um, agricultural area. And, uh, that's, that's our concern.
Okay. Thank you, David. And thank you, Sharon. Um, now, the petitioner will have three minutes for rebuttal.
I'll have to plead a, a bit of ignorance in, in some of this is this, um, my colleague, that this is actually his project.
Okay.
Wiped out with the flu. Um, so I'm filling in as best I can this evening, so I'll start with that.
So, you're taking one for the team tonight?
E- exactly, so trying to, you know, catch up quickly here. So, uh, i- in terms of, um, I, I think that the gentleman that just spoke is, is the reason why we're going here is exactly the rural nature of it, is because we are a company that does rural deployments and looks for rural deployments. Um, in terms of, uh, speaking to what, uh, co-location on S B A, I can't speak too much. I'm not an R F engineer. Um, obviously, one of the reasons why we're requesting postponement is we want to go through the Cityscape project, or Cityscape, uh, report and hopefully be able to look at what the S B A is coming forward and, uh, look at all options before we, you know, move this project to, to the finish line. Um, but, but know that, uh, our economic model, uh, the world of wireless is changing. That profits at present, um, are going to the right side of the decimal point. So, conventional, uh, large companies like S B A and things like that, uh, they squeeze out the economic model that we just can't work under those, those confines. So, I think that'll be one of the things that we'll come back with, is that economic analysis about what is it really? How does it, uh, how does that affect our business model? And are, are we able to be successful in bringing our broadband wireless, uh, service to these rural areas with that sort of an economic consideration? So, um, like I said, we, we'd love to be able to come back and, and bring some more data for you and ha- may have some additional conversations, uh, to make sure that we're bringing up, putting our best foot forward.
Okay, and again, according to our rules, because there was opposition, this will be postponed to another meeting.
Exactly, yeah. It's exactly what we're looking at. And we, and we want to discuss it with the town as well, so we have that opportunity.
And then, have you given thought to, uh, discussing it with S B A?
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll definitely have to have those conversations. Like I said, we really want to go through the economic side of this. Uh, the state statute does allow, uh, for the economic infeasibility. That if the, and also Dane County has that bar, which is what, a hundred-and-twenty-five percent? Um, and I, I don't think we're gonna get anywhere near that, uh, with a company like S B A in all honesty. But we're gonna talk to them.
Okay.
Find out what the possibilities are and bring you back some more information about...
So, at this point, hanging stuff on their tower, it might be feasible?
It, it might be feasible, uh, a- and it very well, uh, may not. Uh, but I think we need to at least bring forward a, a, a bit more information for you from our perspective.
The Robinsons just expressed interest that you pursue.
Most definitely.
Yeah. Alright, thank you.
Great, thank you.
And Roger, you gave your report?
Uh, no, the Town of Montrose, uh, it's, this petition is still pending at the Town of Mon- Montrose. Uh, county staff has expressed concerns that, uh, co-location, uh, is feasible, on an existing tower.
Define what co-location means.
Uh, in nineteen ninety, when we adopted our communication tower ordinances, the primary intent was to, uh, co-locate or, uh, have as many carriers as possible on one antenna, rather than e- each individual carrier putting up antennas that would just, you know, populate the, the entire countryside. So, uh, the staff did express concerns that, uh, this petition did not meet the intent of the ordinances.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the committee? Hearing done. I will entertain a motion to postpone it.
So, moved.
Got a motion and a second. Further discussions, questions on this? Hearing done. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The meeting is, or the petition is postponed. The C U P is postponed. Yep, it is postponed till, uh, a future meeting.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Excuse me? It may be, not be on April ninth, uh, because of the fact that the town has not taken action.
We'll check in.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, primary contact is Majid Allen.
Okay. Well, committee, we've made it through the petitions now. So, we can move on to other business. And we got, uh... OE thirty-three. Town of Middleton, town plan.
So, uh, I don't know if there's anybody from the town here.
Where are the developers?
The developers.
Okay.
So, I'm gonna represent the town's, uh, interest on this one. What you have before you is, is, uh, a Town of Middleton Comprehensive Plan Amendment, but it's strictly a map amendment, as you'll see in the, uh, the map there. And the two amendments that are identified are also in tandem with two zoning petitions that are still pending, uh, that were postponed pending this Comprehensive Plan Amendment. So, the, uh, our staff has reviewed it. Majid, uh, looked at this in some detail. And, uh, to cut to the chase, our staff is supportive of, of the, uh, proposed amendment. The, uh, uh, the planned land uses for both the Pioneer Point Development as well as the K and A Greenhouse property seem to be reasonably consistent with other policies and provisions of both the Town of Middleton Comprehensive Plan as well as the Dane County Comprehensive Plan. So, um, we, we have no issues. In fact, we, we support the, uh, proposed amendment.
Okay. I'll entertain a mo, uh, if there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve, uh, the Town of Middleton Comprehensive Plan into the Dane County Cop Plan.
So, moved.
Second?
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just so moved. Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
And we don't have any zoning map amendments or C U Ps from previous meetings. We do have some plats and C S Ms, though.
Yeah, we have, uh, two final plats. Uh, they're both located in a city, so looking for you for non-objection, certification of non-objection. First one is, uh, Kettle Park West, North Edition, City of Stoughton. This one consists of twenty-two lots, a little over twenty-four acres. Uh, the plat identifies Outlet Three being dedicated to the public for park purposes. You have, uh, as far as major corridors, you have Highway fifty-one to the east. And, uh, the plat does show, uh, construction drainage arrows, uh, shown. Outlet Two is being dedicated to the public for stormwater management.
Committee, I'd like a motion, please?
Certification of non-objection?
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the next one is Smith's Crossing, McCoy Edition, City of Sun Prairie. Uh, this one consists of a hundred-and-thirteen lots, a little over forty-five acres. This is just south of Highway one fifty-one. Uh, parkland, you have Outlet eighty-one shown as being dedicated to the public for park purposes. Uh, parkways, there is one shown, it's called O'Keefe Avenue. It's a hundred-and-twenty-foot, uh, road right-of-way, uh, width. Uh, like I said earlier, Highway fifty-one is, uh, the major corridor that runs, uh, bisects, uh, City of Sun Prairie that's to the north. Drainage arrows are shown throughout the plat. And then Outlets eighty-one and eighty-two are being dedicated to the public for stormwater management.
I entertain a motion.
Move certification and non-objection.
Thank you.
Got a motion and a second, further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So, we'll move on to, uh... No resolutions. We don't have an ordinance amendment. Already taken it up. Items requiring committee action. E C T three-seven-seven, a site plan approval for relocation of farm residents.
Think that'd be me, right?
Ben, I think you're the only one left here except us.
But not too many left in here.
Could you please state your name?
Jeff Murky.
Jeff. Thanks for being patient tonight.
It's okay. I knew that it was gonna be a long meeting.
Yeah, well...
Roger informed me. So, what I'm here for is, um, my wife and I bought a one-hundred-and-foot, eighty-four acre farm, uh, a couple of years ago. And we would like to build our new home, um, pretty much right where the little square is on the farm right there, um, that does exceed the one-hundred-foot, um...
Limit.
Limit, yeah, I'm just trying to read what the word was. Um, so I do need to come for, uh, approval. I, I was at the Town of Deerfield Planning Commission. Um, it was approved there and sent to the town board. I was at the town board, it was approved there, um, to get me up here. The town board did approve it with, uh, a condition that the existing farmhouse never be used as a residence and that I need to remove the kitchen. Um, the existing building, we would like to keep on site. Um, it will not be a residence. We'd like to use it as an accessory building. Um, a couple of things with that, and I forgot to mention this to you, Roger, we talked before, but the well and the water for the barn are in that building. So, it would be, um, extremely difficult to raise that without having to do, uh, another type of building or something to keep the water out to the barn. I realize that what we would like to do will require a, a C U P in the future. We would like to use that accessory building, um, as an office-type, uh, facility. Um, we will be holding some, um, uh, flea markets and then actually an apple festival, um, because just, uh, to the right or to the east of where our proposed home site is, that's an apple and pear orchard. Um, so we're going to utilize that as, uh, promoting the agriculture and, um, orchard, uh, business that we have going there. So, I, I think that, uh, the staff report, I don't want to say has muddied the waters, but it's kind of made, um, two separate issues into one. Um, I think that what I'm here for tonight is to get approval for my new home location so that I can pull those permits and start construction on our new house. And then I can start, um, uh, working on getting the, the C U P in place and applying for that to, uh, continue to utilize the existing building as an accessory building.
Very good. Any questions for, uh, Jeffrey? Anyone wishing to s- I, I don't see anybody here, but anybody wishing to speak in favor or opposition of this? I guess not. So, we'll move on to Roger.
Yeah, uh, staff has, uh, several concerns regarding this. The property is owned F P thirty-five. It's an ag preservation zoning district. It's for agricultural production in farm residences. A provision has been placed in the ordinances that allows the removal and replacement of a farm residence, uh, on the property without going through a, uh, either a conditional use permit or, uh, a rezone to rezone a portion of the property to residential. The primary limit of this provision about removal and replacement of the, uh, farm residence is that the farm residence gets replaced, meaning that the farm residence is removed and another one put in its place. You could do that. If you would like to have two farm residences on a, uh, property, uh, there are avenues to go through, rather than just asking for site plan approval to put another house on. Uh, that would be a conditional use permit to get a secondary farm residence, uh, so that you could have your primary farm residence and a secondary farm residence for, uh, ranch hands and stuff like that, people that assist you on the farm. Uh, the other alternative is to, uh, keep the existing resident, farm residence on the property and for the new residents, separate, uh, a portion of the property out, create a separate lot, and put a house on it. In our ordinances, it says basically you could have one principal use on a lot. And so, having, uh, kind of two houses there, uh, just kind of undermines the spirit of the ordinance.
So, you're saying it violates the, the, uh, ordinance?
Uh, yes, it, it, um, it doesn't comply with the ordinance. Uh, the A-one ex, or the... It, it, um, it doesn't comply with the ordinance, uh, the A-one ex- or the FP thirty-five zoning district. You are allowed to remove and replace the house, uh, without going through a rezoning. Uh, and without the existing house being removed, uh, that would undermine this ordinance. Uh, staff is requesting that either, uh, that the relocation of the, uh, house, uh, be approved with the condition that the existing house must be removed within thirty days of occupancy of the new house or, uh, this, uh, request be denied and the petitioner, uh, be required to rezone a portion of this property or sep- create a separate lot for the new house.
Do I get to speak before you vote?
Yeah, I wanna, I'm just getting to that, Jeffrey.
Okay.
Just gonna ask you how you felt about that.
Okay, um, I respect Roger and I, I, he's got a lot of knowledge, but I think that he is misquoting the ordinance and he's also misspeaking the terms of residence and house. A residence is where someone resides. If we no longer use the existing building as a house, then it is not a residence. Uh, residence is where we live. The residence is our address. The building that is there now would no longer be a residence. It would no longer be a house by definition of the word house or by definition of the word residence. From what I have seen, when, from what I've read and looked up, when they talk about replacement, to replace the existing house, it does not say to abandon or, or raise the existing house. It says replace, a replacement or to replace. We will be replacing the house with a new house. The existing building, which is no longer a house, will be an accessory building which we then can use in accordance to, um, the, uh, the uses of our A-one exclusive or now the FP thirty-five, um, rules for zoning. We can now use that building because it is an existing building. We can use it for a small family business. We can use it for a rural business operated by the owner ourselves. We can use it for the sale of, uh, farmer dairy products. According to, at one time when I spoke to Roger, you mentioned filling the sewer with, uh, cement and removing the plumbing. Businesses are allowed to have a bathroom or a restroom. We would be willing to remove the kitchen as the township, uh, requested. We would be willing to remove the, the tub and shower. But we would request, or, or, um, I guess request, to be able to maintain a toilet and sink. And as I said, we need the plumbing, uh, the water to supply water to the barn. According to the, um, the rules that I pulled up for accessory buildings on our property, we would be allowed sanitary fixtures because our permitted farm accessory building is on a farm of over thirty-five acres. So, with all due respect, I feel that we are being as transparent as we possibly can, telling you what our future goals are, what our future plans are, and the fact that that building will never be used as a residence.
Okay. All right. Roger, do you see that, uh, further discussions are, would be fruitful on this?
Uh, yes, there, there's several options. Uh, you know, if he is true to his word that the house, uh, will no longer be used as a residence, a deed restriction could be placed on the property and having him remove the kitchen and, uh, and also putting a deed restriction on the property. It's not to be used for a single-family residence or human habitation. That's acceptable. But in the past, we've had, you know, if people wanted to, uh, keep the existing residence, it was to turn it into a storage building. That means removing the kitchen, removing the bathroom, removing the water line, disconnecting it from the well, uh, and disconnecting the, uh, sanitary system by removing plumbing in the basement as well as filling in, uh, the pipe that goes to the septic system. And so, then you're guaranteed that it's gonna be used for storage and not kind of morph into a house. We've had occasions where we've had, uh, some buildings in the past, all of a sudden, we get a complaint that they see lights in the old residence. And we come to find out that it's being rented out. And so, that comes in, uh, a major conflict with, uh, housing density rights.
Okay. So, again.
I would be more than happy to, um, entertain or, or.
Have more discussions with staff?
With a deed restriction, you could be that.
Okay. I think at this time, I'll entertain a motion to postpone while the staff and, uh, Jeffrey and the staff discuss this.
Before you, before you make that motion or, or receive that motion, is there any way, we, we need this approval to pull permits to build our new house, which we would like to get started on. Is there any way to separate these two issues to get the approval for our new site location and then have our discussion on the existing building at a later time?
I would think there should be a way to do that, isn't there?
Whatever the, uh, the committee sees.
I mean, is it, is that a logical request? Let me put it that way.
Um, I think they're directly tied together.
Okay.
You know, the existing building and the proposed building because, you know, he's asking for, uh, to replace the residence.
Okay. All right. Because you can only have one residence. Yeah. So, postponement is the way we're gonna have to go here, other than, uh, I, I don't wanna deny this. I don't think the committee would like, go ahead.
I have a quick question for Roger, just. Not really relevant in the scope of it, but. Do you know what splits are left?
Uh, I know there is quite a few, uh, splits that have been taken across this. There was five home sites created across the street. Four home sites created across the street. So, the housing density rights are dwindling.
So, there is a, a, a split left?
I don't know.
Yes, there, I'll, I'll tell you there is, yes.
Okay, so that's one obvious way to go. But I know you don't wanna use a split.
Well, I don't wanna use it because why would I? If, if I'm only having one house, like I said, there's only going to be the one residence.
Yep.
We can go the deed restriction route. We can go whatever route you guys would approve. The existing building will never be a house. That, that's exactly what the town.
Right, we're clear on that.
That's what the Town of Deerfield even.
We're very clear on that. And I think it's just, uh, the, uh, heartburn that the staff has is not related to you but related to things that happened in the past.
And there's numerous, you know, there's numerous buildings on this property that could be facilitate your, your farm business.
They are all being used right now.
Yeah. Well, probably needs to tear down a.
Understood.
A nice structure that he's already got.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Could you go more into how the well is tied to the barn?
On the north side of the house, there's a wing that, um, the house is kind of in a T-shape. And on the north wing of the house, there's like a, I don't know what you wanna call it, but, um, like a doghouse that sticks out underground. The well is in there. And then from there, um, comes up to the pressure tank and then the water goes underground out to the farm, or out to the barn and then into the house and, and up to the, to supply the house.
Mm-hmm. So, but it's important that you keep the toilet?
I, I, I would like to keep the toilet, yes. I mean, um, as an example, where I live now, which is solar house, but is also in the Town of Deerfield, it was zoned A-one exclusive. It's only three acres. I applied for all the permits. Now, this was nineteen ninety-nine, so twenty years ago. I have a toilet and a sink in my workshop. It's all been approved, it's all legal, um, and, um.
At that time, it, it was acceptable, uh, until people started living in the accessory buildings, uh, and the towns got tired of it and changed the ordinance.
But if it came down to getting this done, we, you know, I think we two need to discuss is the feasibility of, of, uh, satisfying concerns. And if one of those concerns is, is taking off the stool, um, you'll have to consider whether you'd be willing to do that or not.
Would the committee be amenable to a deed restriction?
I would be.
Forbidding the human habitation?
I would be. What's rest of the committee?
Yes, sir.
I absolutely would be.
Okay. Can we, uh, take that action tonight?
Yeah.
I'd entertain a motion to, uh, accept a deed restriction. Deed, deed restriction. Forbidding human habitation in that structure. So, move.
Okay.
A second, please. Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Got a deed restriction. I, I, will that accomplish what Jeffrey wants to do, Roger?
I hope so. Well, it'll be enforceable.
No. Roger, I, I.
I understand.
But I'm not.
Yep. Good intentions paved the way, they don't know.
And again, it's not, we're try- we're not trying to give you a hard time, Jeffrey. It's just that in the past, people have violated our goodwill.
I understand that. I know exactly where you're coming from. I know that you don't know me, but, um.
No.
Housing density rights are very passionate in towns. And everybody tries to get one extra.
Yep. And thanks for offering that, Roger, because it allows Jeffrey to keep his splits and, uh, not have to, uh, tear apart a perfectly good structure.
What are you doing for the driveway?
Well, I've been in contact with Scott Hinkle and I've applied for, um, that's a controlled access highway. So, I'm only allowed so many access points. I can use the existing one, but I've put in a, um, petitioner application to move the existing driveway two hundred feet south so that I can, um, come down to our new house and then go up to the farm. It's actually a lot safer. It gives us better visibility. It, it really, and, um, actually, I'm hoping for an email from him today because, uh, last week, he said he would, it was before committee and he needed to make a site visit. And, um, so hopefully, and he was gonna make that site visit last week, so hopefully, he, uh, has gotten that part done for us. So, then my question to the committee is can I now go get permits to, to build our new house? I mean.
Yeah. You know, you're gonna have to, uh, record a deed restriction.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, um, is that something that you guys present or I have drafted?
Just come down, uh, we, we'll draft it and everything.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, I think we do have to vote on this, though. Did we vote on it?
Yes.
We did vote on the deed restrictions.
Okay. Um, and we have to vote on the, um, the relocation?
They, they really do this one motion.
Yeah, that was one motion, okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. So, I guess.
Site plan approval, uh, with deed restriction.
With deed, deed restriction. Very good. That wasn't how the motion was worded, but it is now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, thank you all for understanding and, and.
Jeffrey, thanks for your patience tonight.
Do I need an appointment to come in and do that deed restriction?
Uh, you do need the minimum. You, you have your driveway permit, you have your sanitary permit, you have all the plans for the building plans.
And not yet, because we needed to get our location before we could give our sanitary permit? Is what we were told?
Okay. You need to get your sanitary permit. Driveway, sanitary, uh, access, flushing toilet.
Just a second, officer.
Good to go. Then build the deed restriction.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jeffrey. Um, we'll move on now to.
Your turn, Ben.
Well, I did go on a, on, under G, other business as a law by law. I wanna talk about St. Paul's Liberty Church a little bit. They're gonna be coming back in force on the ninth, which is our next meeting, correct?
That is correct.
Yep. And, uh, as I understand it, I wanna make sure the committee understands that it's not a public hearing. So, people are only allowed to give testimony if they're called upon. And I'm not telling you not to call on anybody. I'm telling you that there won't be any speaking unless you, they are called on. Go ahead, Roger.
I could forward you the email that I forwarded to the, both, uh, the applicant as well as the, uh, the Lutheran church.
Yep.
Uh, regarding committee rules.
Let me help you spell what they are.
Yes, yeah. So, I will forward that on, uh, tomorrow morning.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it's, I can also give you a committee rules. I have a copy over there, but, uh, I just cut that section out.
Okay.
What happens after subsequent meetings, so.
Right. Um, and the other thing is a site visit. I've been there and, uh, I'm wondering what the committee, if there's any interest in going out there for a site visit before the meeting.
I definitely have interest in it.
Do you have a second? Roger, can we?
Yes, I just have to post notice.
Any idea when you folks would like to do that?
My availability is a little bit all difficult, but I'm, I'm getting some others.
Is it possible to do a site visit on a weekend?
Yeah.
Yes. However you would like.
I know a weekend isn't ideal. It's just, it's difficult to get a stop or.
Actually, that's, that's generally when we're done. Generally, when we do them.
All right.
Yeah. If Saturday morning, Sunday morning. Tied in with church.
Hi, everybody.
No, it, actually, it's a, a very interesting site visit 'cause it's a, uh, not only a very, very, very old church, but it's, uh, um, to see the damage and it's hard to determine how it was caused. And then there's a, uh, a meeting room across the street, meeting hall, is that what it's called? And then there's also a cemetery next door. And then, of course, they have, will we be able to look at the pit?
If you so desire. So, I would be tied to the Saturday nearly before the meeting. So, we'll check for single-digit April, Saturday, that is.
Uh, sixth.
Sixth.
Yeah.
Set it up, uh, in the morning?
You wanna do morning or early afternoon?
It's in the morning. Bring it somewhere to me.
So, let me check mine.
Saturday morning at eight o'clock, nine o'clock?
Yeah. Um, oh. It looks like it might just have to be you two. My daughter's got a dance competition and so I will be, I have to do that.
Mm-hmm.
Well, then, I've already been there and I know, you know, I actually.
Or possibly, everyone could go out individually.
Yeah, well, I did that yesterday, or Sunday. I went out there, yeah. Just stroll around on my own, 'cause I, I didn't want anybody breathing down my neck from the church or from the pit.
It was an effort to go out individually, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And, uh, you can, did you take a look at the, at this letter that she gave us?
Um, it's an inter- inter- directory.
That's got stuff about the county in there.
I did not take a, a look at that.
Where is the county in there?
But I, I, I would suggest, um.
I think the crux of what they're saying, I, is that apparently at the town meeting, there's a statement, if I understand it correctly. But my understanding is that there's a statement made perhaps by one of the town supervisors to the effect that the county was insistent on that condition that they imposed about the exception, the one in ten exception.
Right. And that, that's not true.
And we did not insist on it.
No.
We incorporated it into our staff report because it was based on the town.
Mm-hmm.
It seemed to be that the, the compromise that the town was leaning toward. So, we built it into our conditions and the conditions are always considered draft and tentative. It's our best guess as to what could forge compromise on the proposal. But we were not insistent on that proposal. And as we understand it now more clearly, um, it may be in conflict with the town ordinance.
Okay.
And our initial recommendation that we were leaning toward was simply that they received their, their license or their. or their, I believe it's their license or certificate for blasting at the town level, leaving it more generic in that way. So that one in ten compromise that town saw, um, came from the town, and it was not something that we were insistent of. And I think that's what they're, one of the issues they may be alluding to that had, that got...
So what actually are we anticipating on the ninth?
Uh, well, you're gonna have to deliberate, make a decision.
I mean, but what, what is the request, to reopen the pit? Start hauling or start blasting?
Yes, yes, uh, Mrs. Halverson has requested that the pit be reopened and a new conditional use permit be, uh, issued.
Technically, the conditional use permit has expired.
Okay.
So that one's no longer in play, obviously this one is pending. You know, they're not doing anything as we speak until this one gets approved with all the bond conditions.
Okay, um, does that include blasting?
Yes.
And what is that, what were they talking tonight about? It's okay if one in ten blasts is over the decibels allowed?
We're really gonna have to review their letter because that, you know, it, it has just been submitted, so, uh, we could, we could summarize it in an email.
Email, and then on the ninth, can we add more conditions? If we so wish.
If the CLR committee so desires, yes.
Okay, 'cause that's what I'm thinking is, um... If they hire a competent blaster, and we had a company here, then they, we had Bill Bugless from Painted Dome here today, and he said their blaster, you know, you can't even, and I've witnessed their, their blasts, and it's just a poof, you don't feel a thing if it's done right. But the church is gonna say, well, it's on bedrocks, so we will feel something, and there will be vibrations, so, um...
I think we're entering into discussion and, uh, and I, I would suggest that we refrain from...
Yeah, let's stop. Okay, I entertain a motion to adjourn at this time.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.